Let's begin to come to order. Today is Tuesday, May 3rd, 2016. This is a study session for the Prescott City Council. I want to welcome everybody that's decided to take time out of your day and come and join us today. This is an opportunity for the city council today to be apprised of some open space issues and the policy that we've had in the past. So we won't be taking any public comment today, and afterwards, we'll be moving into an executive session. So at that point, roll call, please.
Mayor Oberg.
Here.
Mayor Protam Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
[inaudible]
Here.
Councilwoman Orr.
Here.
Councilman Chisika.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
All present.
Discussion item one, please.
Item 1A, Open Space Program Update.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, for the opportunity to update you on the open space program. Kind of go through a little timeline here for you first. Starting in 1999, the City of Prescott adopted the first open space plan, and then in 2000, the voters approved a 1 percent sales tax extension to include funds for streets and open space. 2003, the mayor at that time appointed a open space advisory committee. In 2009, then, the work of that committee came out with a master plan, which was then approved by city council. That was 2009. In that same year, with that work being done, the mayor at the time then disbanded that committee. 2012 and 2013, we worked with stakeholders throughout the community to update that 2009 open space master plan. And then there's been a couple subsequent updates to council in 2014 and 2015. And then, of course, as you all know, in 2015, the sales tax relating to the open space funding expired. From the 2000, the difference between 2008 and 2009 is the plan was generated in 2008, approved by council in 2009, so don't be confused by that. The 2008 open space plan overview, the value criteria that was outlined from that committee in that plan, was that the property should be recreational, scenic, ecological, prehistoric, historic, cultural, economic, and have strategic connection. You know, one or more of those features in a piece of property to make it move to the top of the list. The tools that were laid out in that plan and continue on today, there's more than one way to get the open space through land donations, through land exchanges, fee sample purchases, easements, license agreements, through third-party facilitators such as Central Regional Land Trust, state land reclassifications, federal land acquisition opportunities, public-private partnerships. This is a big one, moving forward, planned area developments and master plans. That'll be big moving forward. And then, of course, voter-approved initiatives, which we don't have at this time. So in 2012, then, we reached out to the stakeholders in the community, a lot of the local nonprofits, a lot of the land managers, the county, town of Prescott Valley, we had the Forest Service, a lot of people invited them to a series of stakeholder meetings to look at the 2009 plan and to just kind of make adjustments that were more current. So we went through and defined the properties, which in large part had already been defined, but of course, some other opportunities had come up, so we updated that. Then we reported that progress to the general plan committee, and then we gave that general plan committee a tour of some of the geographical areas that were outlined in that plan, so they could get their feet on the ground. We then divided it into funding versus non-funding, and I'll get into that a little bit more in a minute. And then again, we just continued to take input from local nonprofits to currently update the plan and to see where other opportunities might lie. So what we did from that, updating that 2009 plan then, was put the properties into four different, we identified 48 properties in different areas, and then put them into these five categories. And some landed in more than one category, because there's possibly, you might get a donation, or you might end up with an easement. So there was, they fell into different categories. Some fell into two or three different categories. But in general, those categories were designation via development agreements, access to open space via trail easements and license agreements, which we've done a lot of recently with the Circle Trail as a good example, designations using the 1 percent sales tax monies, conservation via donations, and then other properties that were identified as suitable for conservation. These being primarily big tracks of state trust land, for example, Pea Mountain, Glassford Hill, those properties where they don't have the water to develop, they're very steep properties, but they are suitable for conservation. Then we lined up that plan to make sure that it was, it lined up with the goals set forth in the 2015 general plan, and I think we've accomplished that. Goal number one was to pursue a majority of the recommendations by the former advisory committee on open space acquisition from the council-adopted 2008 open space master plan. So we've continued that, those recommendations on and just updated those, to seek collaborative ventures between private, public, and nonprofit sectors for expanding, improving, maintaining, and providing stewardship for open space, and then, of course, maintaining the biological, cultural, visual, and recreational integrity of those protected and unprotected tracks of open space. Here's the open space expenditures from the tax since its inception. You can see some years where a lot of money was spent and some years where it wasn't. Some of these bridged fiscal years, some of the purchases bridged fiscal years, so some years seemed bigger than others. But in all, the total amount spent was 16 million, just a little over $16 million.
Joe, does that include Willow and Watson Lake?
Willow and Watson Lake was purchased in 1998 before the sales tax.
Okay. But it is used for open space.
It is used for open space.
And we did purchase it.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Open space, outdoor recreation, and tourism, I mean, we really look at it, in our department especially, as outdoor recreation creates tourism and brings spending to the community. And we're uniquely positioned, Prescott is, for an outdoor recreation destination, just as evidenced by what happened last weekend, what happened the weekend before with the Circle Trail run. We're really known throughout the country as a destination for outdoor recreation, whether that's recreational racers, or whether that's just a family coming for, you know, a few days to hike trails and things like that. So, you know, an indicator of that is the visitor study that was just completed by NAU showed that over 40 percent of the people surveyed came to Prescott to hike trails. So we know we're creating visitation. We know that as we build infrastructure, we build more appeal for people from outside the community to come in and visit the community and see the sites, hike the trails, and see what we have to offer. The recreational endurance athletes, that's an area we've really been working on to build up our sports calendar. Outdoor recreation is a shoulder season activity, which we hope we can build some mountain bike races or any kind of adventure racing on our shoulder seasons, which is April, March, October, which is a great month in Prescott. So we really want to use that as a tool to build those shoulder seasons and try to get more visitation during those times where hotel occupancies might be in the 70 percent range versus from Labor Day to Memorial Day to Labor Day, which we're running in the 90 percent as far as hotel activity. Trails are efficient use of public space, and they reduce the need for costly infrastructure. They provide a high return on investment. We, all of our trails are native surface. We don't pave our trails. We don't have to go in and rebuild them. We just have to make sure that the water's draining properly and that we get enough foot traffic on them. That's really a big part of how we maintain those trails. It also creates what I call get-off-the-couch spending, which is local spending, but that's, you know, husbands and wives that get out on Sunday, or they may stay home, but they go out and hike together and buy a cup of coffee or go get some ice cream. So it does produce some local spending, a lot like our softball leagues do during the weeks when people get together and play softball and then go out and have a drink or have a meal. So it creates that, that local spending as well. So as I said before, we've been working with nonprofit partners and citizen groups, you know, since really the 80s in bringing these properties in. And, you know, it also, besides the preservation part, it supports outdoor recreation opportunities and, again, tourism. Another indicator of this, we have trail counters on 56 miles of our 76 miles of city trails, and we're up to about 800,000 trail visits per year. And we continue to increase about 9 percent per year. So that's about 2,100 trail visits per day. So that, that's got to create some spending on its own with people getting out. And some of the examples of open space that's been purchased, and this is just a few of them, and some trail counts on those, is the James property, the 80 acres, which now encompasses the Constellation Trail system, has seen a little over 52,000 visits per year. The Westridge, which is the Centennial Trail system. We like to build trail systems, and the Constellation is a good example. It's a trail system that hopefully in the future can connect to another trail system, so we can link those together. Granite Gardens was an open space purchase that's seen about 18,000 people a year. Most of these trails were just built in the last five, six years. Circle Trail, of course, making that connection, and then the Flume Trail from the Payne purchase in 2009. So here's a map, and just with some general circles around some general areas of interest where there's still opportunities to look for properties that might expand that infrastructure. And I'll just point to a few just in general. There's, the Circle Trail is connected, and it functions, but there is a piece that goes through a neighborhood off of K-Tim in the Williamson Valley area that through either a development agreement if an annexation occurs, or through possibly an easement, we'd like to take that trail through state trust land up through a privately-held ranch and connect that over to the Forest Service Trail. The one in the center of the screen at the very top where it says add to a very popular trail system, the squiggly lines you see in the red there, that is the Constellation Trail, about 52,000 visits a year. And there's a little gap between there, and then you'll see the other line, and that is the Willow Dells Trail, which goes around Willow Lake and around the back of Willow Lake, and through some kind of an agreement, it would be nice to make a connection there. We also have some properties along Watson Lake for some very scenic Dell's properties. We have some trail connections over in the area of the Circle Trail that we'd like to make, one from the mall, the Gateway Mall, to the Circle Trail to connect the trail to the businesses, and to hopefully get some trail signage up off of Highway 69, which sees about 14.7 million cars a day, or a year, not a day. And so really would get some visibility and some visitation, hopefully to support those businesses and also visit the trails. We're also constantly looking for improving trailhead access to cut down on any illegal trails that we might have. And so those, there are some areas that have been identified that we think we can do. The Greenways is another opportunity for us to connect the downtown, hopefully through the Greenways out to the Peavine Trail. And there's some opportunities in there that, you know, we've been working on, and we've been, I think last year we did nine easements or donations of land or license agreements with property owners there, and we want to continue that effort. Some are easier to get than others, and some, you know, may require more than just working out an easement. And then also out of the Goldwater Lake area, there's possibly an opportunity there to extend our already city-owned property by an agreement with the Forest Service, which would allow us to expand camping and other recreational opportunities, which would increase that visitation out to that lake. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
I have a couple of questions. This one's probably better directed toward Mark Woodfill. On page... Joe, you gave us the amount of money that had been spent on open space expenditures. Mark, can you tell us the total amount of sales tax collected under the streets and open space sales tax for the last 15 years?
I thought you might ask this question.
You read my mind.
So obviously, the sales tax goes in the Streets and Open Space Fund, which has other revenue sources as well, which we've talked about. So here up on the screen, I have a recap of since the sales tax election was expanded back in 2001. You can see total sales tax collected over that time period, 191 million, 191.7. Other revenues, which include HERF, streetlight fees, other fees that are specific to streets, 40.7. And then we have the open space spending. My number's a little different than Joe's was, just because of the final year. His was pre-audit, mine was after audit. But yeah, we're just over $16 million spent, leaving the fund balance, which we also looked at during the mid-year budget workshop. We had the fund balance of 22,633,197. Keeping in mind that that was a mid-year estimate, and contracts had been awarded and are in progress, you know, that would need to come out of that, or future revenues of about 7.5 million. So you're looking more around $15 million worth of fund balance if you took out those contracts.
And that 15 million is unobligated or unbudgeted?
It is budgeted. It is part of the 16 budget. I don't have that number handy, but it was budgeted for projects in the year, but it was not committed as of December 31st.
Okay. I have one more question of Joe. You mentioned the amount of maintenance that our trail system requires. I know we have a group, a large group of volunteers that provide maintenance and trail-building skills. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Well, we're able to do a lot of our trail maintenance and our trail building through our volunteer base with coordination from the city, and that's been very successful, continues to be successful. In fact, the, you know, the workforce that they have has even allowed them to reach out and do some work in other communities. So that workforce is there. Again, Chris does a really wonderful job of designing trails to keep water off them, and that's the biggest enemy, is drainage. So I think we found with the recent trails that were built in 2013, 14, 15, we've had very little callback as far as maintenance goes.
Great. So what is your total annual budget for maintenance in the trails?
Well, Chris's salary comes out of the general fund. That's part of that process. There's $10,000 out of bed tax money that we get for open space, and that is about the extent of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Chisika.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Joe, going forward, what do you think a majority of our citizens want? Do they want access or line-of-sight purchases?
Well, Councilman Chisika, I think that depends upon the property. You know, all properties are unique. I think probably what I see, and again, each property's got its own characteristics. Some are repairing areas that you want to keep the access to a little bit less because it's fragile. But I think the majority of what I see is, and I see from our trail counts are, you know, by the fact that they're growing at 9 percent a year, is access to open space.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Mayor Protam.
Thank you. Joe, it's an easy number to look down and see what we spend. Between land donations, land exchanges, public trail easements, land area developments, you know, everything in the city's portfolio is an asset. Do you have any idea how much value the land that the city's acquired in the last 20 years or whatever it's been in open space, other than just plain purchase? And I realize that the money that was spent on the lakes was done with a bond issue, and I realize that the lakes were bought for water and recreational opportunities. So I'm not throwing that in the bucket, okay? The bucket I'm talking about is above and beyond Willow and Watson.
Councilman Lamerson, that's difficult to put a number to. I understand exactly what you're saying, and we could work to get a number for you on that. It's substantial.
I'd appreciate that, because, you know, it's a significant number, and I think the community has a right to know. It is their property when, gentlemen, I see one out in the audience now comes to the community and wants to build on his property, and we make him give us 25, 30 percent of his land in order to build on it. That has a value.
Similar to what Councilman Lamerson just said, another number that would be great to have would be the impact economically. I know we know the numbers as far as visitors, the number of people that are on the trails. 40 percent of the people coming come for the trails. I don't know if a lot of those are, you know, we talk about beds and heads, whether or not they stay overnight. Certainly, I think the trails, the Circle Trail's going to bring people overnight. But have you, do you have an estimate of the economic impact of the trail system?
I have numbers for statewide, depending on outdoor recreation, which is, it's a segment of the economy that continued to grow during the recession. You know, I use indicators such as the transient occupancy tax, which has grown by 42 percent in five years. You know, that's not just outdoor recreation. That's our sports tournaments have grown too, and that's a lot of other, the special events that happen around town. But those are indicators I have. I don't have a number specific to Prescott.
Would it be possible to kind of figure one out? I know it would be an estimate, but is there, just so we could compare what we spend, what we bring in?
Councilwoman, I'll look into that and see what I can do.
Because I have seen something, Joe, and I want to say something, $5 million or something as far as outdoor education, the impact.
I will look and see what I can come up with. I know I have statewide numbers. I know we continue to increase our market share in the state, so it's not really fair to compare us to, I'm not going to throw anybody else under the bus, but we're a unique destination.
We are.
We get our share.
Yeah. Okay.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
I have another question for Mark. If you wouldn't mind putting that graph up on the screen again, or table. I just needed to clarify something. The mid-year budget screen. The fund balance under the FY16 budget column at the 5...
Yes.
.48 million at the very bottom. What does that represent?
That represents where it was budgeted for the year. So looking, estimating revenues and picking the capital projects that were anticipated to be done in '16 as part of the budget that was adopted, it was budgeted to only have, or only, but have $5.5 million of fund balance at the end of the year.
Okay. So in our budget, we anticipated that there would be a fund balance of at least $5 something million.
Right.
Okay. So the question the council needs to deal with is, what do we do with that money in the next year's budget and coming years?
Always a question we deal with at budget time is the fund balances. But again, that's for the whole year, and again, the tax was only for half the year.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I've got a few. Are we currently maintaining all of our open space where it's fire-safe?
We have our open space and our park system that's outside of the open space on a rotating schedule for fire-wise clearing. Are we ahead of the curve or behind the curve? We're probably a little behind the curve on it. Again, we have set them up in a rotation and have, in the past, received grants that kept us, you know, kind of up to date. Some of the properties that we have, specifically the properties like in the Dell's where you have a lot of rock, really don't require too much fire-wise because it has the spacing already. I do communicate with our fire marshal on a regular basis about properties that we have. But to answer your question, we could be a little more diligent.
Okay. How much are we spending annually on clearing open space to keep it fire-wise?
Well, most of it was grant-funded, so we really haven't spent money out of the general fund or my department in the past. It's been grant-funded, and the Wildland Division has taken care of that. 2013, we did a perimeter of Acker Park. That was all grant-funded. 2014, we did the five-acre parcel off of Sixth Street, across from Granite Creek Park. That was grant-funded. So out of the general fund, we spent very little money, other than what, you know, my staff does in certain areas that we have, which is not, not large-scale.
Okay. Mark, I think sometime back I saw a, this chart where you said that we were about $72 million behind in street backlog right now. Is that correct?
I don't recall that specific chart, but there is a backlog that I believe Public Works did a presentation on, on street maintenance and the backlog.
Okay. That's correct. Okay. And I think even with the 1 percent right now being dedicated to streets, we're still looking at that continuing to grow, because if I remember correctly, the chart showed us growing in 10 years to 79 million from saving 2 million. So I mean, we continue to have a significant backlog that we're going to have to look at. Is that correct?
Yes, you're correct, Mr. Mayor. We made a presentation. Currently, we had a backlog, and I believe was $74 million. And that was prior to the last vote by, by the voters. We had different scenarios, that if they did not renew the 1 cent tax, we would have had about $100 million backlog in about 10 years. Current 1 cent would keep us like this. We may not necessarily reduce so much below 74 million. We're going to do our best, but it will remain about 70-plus million dollars because we have major, major road projects that are in the backlog.
Okay. And you could possibly answer this, too. I believe we have some highway widening, things of that nature are going to cost us money. Is that already figured into that maintenance budget?
Some of them have, yes, and some of them are in the future budgets.
So the widening of 89 and anything we might do on 69, are they in there or are they separate?
They're in there.
They're in there, okay. Joe? I understood the, your briefing here, it looks like we haven't completed the trail system. There's still work to be done on that?
That's correct.
Okay. How many miles of trail system do you still need to complete?
Well, that's difficult to put our finger on. Opportunities come up not, or late in the future that we don't have now, but, you know, I would say we're probably 75 percent done, so...
So you can't give me miles, you can just give me percentage?
Well, we have about 76 miles right now, so I would say probably another 25 miles or so.
Okay. What do you think it's going to cost to complete that trail system?
Well, again, that's difficult, too. If we're just looking for a linear corridor that connects a trail to another trail, that's one cost. If we're looking for a trail system, let's say northwest part of the Dell's, similar to the Constellation, that would involve more trail and a trail system, that's probably a, either a parcel purchase. So the linear corridors are the bank for the buck. That's where, you know, we get the more value. But we have to have those trail systems that are interspersed in there to create that, you know, that allure to bring people back and bring people, and put ourselves on the map as a trail town and a trail destination. So it's difficult to answer. I would say anywhere between 2 and 10 million. That's a pretty wide range, I know, but that's the, that's, it just depends upon what we want as a community and what the policymakers think is the best for the community.
Okay. And I think I saw on your chart up there, we're talking about developments that are coming in, annexations, things of that nature. I think some of those are going to be looking at providing some additional open space, aren't they?
Correct. There's, there's great opportunity through development agreements. Again, you know, there's, there's more tools in the toolbox, obviously, than just a purchase, and a purchase is the last one, but it is a tool in the toolbox that's nice to have.
Do we have any idea what amount of land we're looking at having dedicated to open space from these annexations and developments?
Well, I think it depends upon, you know, if they've got the 25 percent, if it's a PAD where they've got the 25 percent that needs to be open space. Again, some of that open space is not really going to be, not function as recreational open space. I can't remember the numbers on the total annexation, but if it was 1,100 acre, or say it was 1,000 acres, there's 250 acres. How much of that would be recreational, I wouldn't, I wouldn't know for sure.
Okay. So would that land be maintained by the city, once it's designated as open space?
What we would hope to do is, is have a dedicated easement from the development that would be, the trail system would be the City of Prescott's trail system, part of the Mile High Trail system. The open space outside of that would be their responsibility to maintain.
So there, you wouldn't see an additional cost to the city?
No, we would just have the trail width, which we typically going to be about 10 to 15 feet wide, just, we try to end up with about a three-foot walking tread or four-foot, but then you've got cuts or fills, so about... but then you've got cuts or fills, so about 10 to 15 feet wide. That would be the corridor, that would be the recorded easement to the City of Prescott and be our responsibility to maintain, which, again, you know, built correctly with the proper drainage in it and enough activity on it, it's pretty minimal.
Okay, well, we do have current linear easements. Do those have to be refreshed at some point, or do we have them for, you know, long periods of time, like 20 years, 30 years?
You know, we do very, very little. I mean, I can't, and Chris is here, if he can think of a particular instance, but usually we'll build a trail and we'll go back to it after a big rainstorm, and we might find one or two areas we just need to touch up. The Over the Hill Gang comes in and maybe they just put a little depression in to get the water off the trail, and then, you know, it's back to good. So, it's really...
Yeah, what I was talking about is, if we have an agreement to go over somebody's land with a trail, is there any recurring cost to that easement?
No.
Okay, so we get it for long periods of time?
Correct.
For 40, 30, 40, 50 years, something like that?
Correct.
So, we pay a one-time cost?
In that case, through the development, yes. State trust lands are different. Those easements are easements that depending upon the zoning of the property, can be 10 or 50 years that you revisit that. 10 on the commercially zoned property, 50 on the residential zoned property. But these easements through the development agreements would just be outright donations.
Okay. Maybe this is for Mark. How much money do we have in the budget for 2016 for any kind of open space, trail maintenance, whatever?
For maintenance or for acquisition?
Both.
I believe we had 730 in the budget for acquisition. That was made up of these two projects from last year, one dealing with Golar Lake and one with the right-of-way on state trust land. As far as maintenance, as Joe said earlier, there's about $10,000 from the bed tax and then some salary cost in the general fund. I don't have an exact number on that.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Shiski?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Joe, excuse me, can you cite any incidences where the price of land has gone up because all of a sudden Prescott has money to buy open space?
For personal experience, I can't, but I wasn't here when the majority of the money was spent. In the time that I've been here, you know, I think we've averaged about $30,000 a year. But I would imagine back when there was more property being purchased, the land values were up. I think the average price per acre that was paid when you average everything out was about $50,000 per acre.
Thank you. Councilwoman Blair?
Yeah, Joe, if you would, and I don't know that you'll have that answer, but Prescott Lakes as being one of the newer subdivision quote-unquote donated quite a bit of land based upon the PAD. And we ended up with a lot of trail systems through Prescott Lakes, as well as the Vista Park and other things. Can you put a number on that? Again, it's not about the feature of walking to one of the gated communities that they called open space. It's not about the right-of-way that's in the middle of the street that they landscaped called open space. I'm talking about usable recreational space. We do maintain the park on top of the hill that was donated to us from Prescott Lakes. We utilize and maintain those trails through Prescott Lakes. And just recently, you guys just got through with Chris's help, thank you, creating a trail through the new Dell subdivision, and I'm sure there's open space tied with that. There is a value to those to the community that we receive based upon PADs, and that value, as Jim talked about, I think the citizens need to understand what that value is. So, if sometime we can put a number on those, because I know you, going up to Prescott Lakes and seeing that park every single day, and especially on the weekends, used nonstop, as well as that trail system that links in with Watson and Willow Lake, a pretty popular place to be.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Thank you, Mayor. The 25% open space requirement for a PAD doesn't necessarily require that that open space be accessible to the public. Is that right?
That's correct. There's private open space and public open space.
So, in some of the PADs that you've seen in your time here, have, do we have a combination of public and private? And do you have any sense of how much of it is open to the public?
It's a combination. You know, I do find that most of the developers are really keen on the idea that trails can become a great marketing tool for home sales. So, they're open to arrangements that allow public access, because again, it does work as a marketing tool for sales.
So, 25% may sound like a lot of acreage, but in fact, not all of it is open and available for public recreational use, right?
Correct.
Councilwoman Blair?
I would disagree and ask the city attorney. If the City of Prescott is requiring through legislation by the city code that they, the developers give up 20% of their property because it's a PAD, it then becomes the City of Prescott's open space property, and it's showed on the map as open space and is publicly accessible.
I think it depends. You have undeveloped open space or natural open space, which is sort of untouched, and you have other sort of undeveloped open space, which could be, you know, lawn areas or those kinds of things. The sort of, so we're talking about, when we talk about the 25% as far as the Land Development Code, it's really sort of that undeveloped space, which is, you know, no parking, not including parking lots, or obviously the buildings or those kinds of things. It's really sort of that undeveloped or grass areas or drainage areas can all be considered open space. Most often, more often than not, the open space isn't dedicated to the city. The city doesn't own it. The homeowner association has then the maintenance obligations for it. So, but oftentimes, as part of that, we get, we get a trail easement, which is in perpetuity, so we get it forever. That becomes essentially city property, the easement itself. So, the land development code open space requirement isn't a dedication requirement. The underlying property owner, which ultimately is the homeowner association, continues to own it and have the obligation to maintain it. By way of a development agreement, if we do a PAD sort of as a rezoning and a development agreement, we can get, you know, 25% or some other number dedicated to the city, you know, as part of that agreement, as part of the sort of exchange for rezoning, for instance. It's a considered, basically a consideration to that.
Then we need to do our job, like has been done in the past, when somebody comes forth and wants to annex into the city, is require them to dedicate certain parts of their development for public access through those developments.
Well, and again, I think we tend to do that public access, that trail easement, and I think a lot of it may depend on sort of what, you know, the location of the property that's annexing in, you know, and how they're going to configure the open space. Because if, sometimes the open space could be internal to a project.
Right.
It could be like a Central Park kind of to a project, which may or may not be accessible to the public. It may be accessible more to the homeowners who are, you know, in that particular development. So, but that, that's part of the planning, the planning process and the development process. When a developer comes in and says, I've got, you know, I'm annexed in at one acre or two acre lots, I want to do a PAD and have these various different sizes of residential lots. Part of that is just simply the negotiation. You know, you want to upzone what's in it for the city slash the public in exchange for that, and that's usually part of the negotiation in a development agreement.
Okay, and I think that's important to understand, because as, through planning and zoning, the maps show that those lands that are set aside cannot be built upon, so therefore, they're held in advance to be called common areas or public space or wildlife corridors that through an agreement can be used, which comes with a value.
And again, if you follow strictly the Land Development Code, that open space can and is maintained as private property, you know, owned by the developer, ultimately, the homeowner association. By way of a development agreement, we can require a dedication if it fits into sort of the plan, you know, the plan for open space, you know, and is necessary or desirable to achieve as public open space versus simply natural open space or non-developed open space, which is continued to be owned and maintained by the homeowner association ultimately.
And the reason why I'm focusing on this is, we well know, we have the Dells coming in and another section of that coming in, as well as Ron James's property that's coming in as an annexation and now is being plotted. When those happen, it is our, it's our duty as a group of seven to ask if they will allow us or to require them as part of the process to give and take those properties for those things, rather than us having to pay red dollar cash for all those.
Councilwoman Ohr?
And I think on Steve's point, I happen to live in Prescott Lakes, and we have a lot of open space in Prescott Lakes. A lot of it is private, but because we have public trails going through, the public gets to enjoy and see the beautiful lakes, and although they are maintained by Prescott Lakes, they are, I believe, a great asset to our city because they're beautiful and everybody gets to go over and enjoy them. It's right on a public street, and so they're certainly public access. So, even though it's, a lot of that space in Prescott Lakes is private, it's also accessible and beautiful to the public. And I think that brings a great value to our community.
And if I could, councilwoman Ohr, council, a good example is the circle trail. The circle trail goes through state trust lands, and it's an easement that we have, but on either side of that, it's state trust land, which is open space. You do have to get an annual permit to access that property. I think it's $20 a year or something like that. But really, it's open space that we've created access to that we don't maintain and we didn't pay for, other than the lineal easement. So, that's another example of that.
Any other questions, comments? I've got two final ones. What are you getting annually in a way of grants to support clearing our open space?
Clearing our open space, our acquisition, or just any grants in general?
Yeah, whatever grants you get. What do you get annually?
Well, the fire department has been the one that primarily has been getting the grants, so I don't have a number on what they've done for that part of it. The grant monies that were funded through the Arizona State Lottery for like land purchase and things like that have been pretty nonexistent for at least five or six years now, so very little, other than what the fire department has gotten for the land firewise work.
Right, so you work closely with the fire department on what areas you want to have cleared, and then they go get the grant, is that it?
Correct.
Okay. I think one comment I'd like to go ahead and make too, is that I talked to our real estate manager, and he indicated that the prices that we're paying, that we paid in the past for a lot of the open space was exorbitant. We couldn't, if we sold today, we wouldn't get half the price. So, what are we doing if we're looking at future acquisitions? How are we going to ensure that we get it at the right price? You know, we're spending the taxpayers' money.
Well, you know, to praise value, back then, they were paying a praise value, but it was, property rates were much higher. Again, it averaged about $50,000 a year. 2011, we did a 30-plus acre purchase, and I think we ended up at about $1,900 an acre on that one. So, there's bargain sales. I guess the best way to put it is, you know, it's all in the negotiation and the opportunities and the willingness of the property owners. It has to be a win-win in a situation like that. But I think, I think the real estate specialist is right. In the past, there was some exorbitant prices that were paid. And again, I think anything, any purchase that would happen with open space money would come back to this body for approval. So, at that time, you know, we would look at those numbers to see if we were getting the best value for the citizens.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Well, before we close out this, I'd like to go ahead and, I could see at least one or two people out there that are with the Over the Hill Gang, and I'd like to thank them for all the work that they do for the city in maintaining the trails, and I know it's greatly appreciated by the council. So, thank you. Item B?
Item 1B, legislative update. Thank you, Mayor and council. I don't have a lot to share today. I know that will probably disappoint Mayor Protim Lamerson, but maybe next time we'll have more. It is the 114th day of the legislative session. It is the fourth day that the Senate and House have been talking about the budget all day long into the night. So, that is their main focus right now. This morning, I received 10 pages of line item adjustments that are being considered. So, it doesn't look like we're much closer to agreement between the House and Senate on a budget. So, I think we have a few more days ahead of us as far as the budget goes. After that, there has been a commitment from President Biggs that bills that have a final vote pending will be heard in the House and Senate. We'll see if that happens. There was a, there were bills that were victims of the budget last year, so hopefully, House Bill 2107 will not be a victim of the budget this year. I think we can be optimistic that, based on the progress that other bills have made, that we will see a final vote on that in the House. I would point out that the fireworks bill that we have been tracking did make it through Senate COW yesterday, Committee of the Whole. So, it's still moving towards a Senate vote, and we did make contact with Senator Pierce requesting that he vote no on that, once it reaches a final read in the Senate. Other than that, we have seen 107 bills passed. 105 of those have been signed by the governor. One of those was vetoed, the cursive handwriting. And there are a number of bills that still are awaiting a final read related to guns in public places, the fireworks bill, House Bill 2107, structured sober living, the Airbnb bill is still awaiting final read, and there's always the opportunity, when the budget's moving slow, for different items to be victims of the budget. So, I don't have much else.
Any questions, comments from the council? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item C?
Item 1C, request for information regarding the May 3, 2016 voting meaning agenda items.
Does anybody have any requests for information for upcoming voting? Apparently not. Okay, thank you, everybody, for attending. We'll reconvene at 5:30 with the voting session. This being adjourned.
Mayor, have we done the E session here?
I think we better go downstairs.